Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
At this time, I am pleased to administer the oath of office for our newly elected and re-elected members, Sue Casey and Mike Deedy. Will you please both stand?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations and thank you.[66.73][66.73](applause)
The first order of business is the election of board officers. I will now entertain nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2015-16 school year.
I would like to nominate Mike Sefalato.
And I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? And we need a roll call vote. Ann?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike Deedy?
Yes.
Mike Guston?
Yes.
Mike Sefalato.[106.28][106.28](laughter) Okay, I declare the nominations closed. And would you like to stand for the oath of office, Mike?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations.[142.13][142.13](applause)
Watch it.
I will now entertain a motion for the Vice President of the Board of Education for the 15-16 school year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Sue Casey.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? I declare the poll closed. And we need a roll call vote. Ann?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike Deedy?
Yes.
Mike Guston?
Yes.
Mike Sefalato?
Yes.
Would you please stand for your oath of office?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
Yes, I will.
Congratulations.[206.12][206.12](applause) And I now turn the meeting over to Mike Sefalato, who will administer the oath for the Superintendent.
Thank you.
And here's my name, Lieutenant.
Karen. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we just need your signature. Kathy, do you need...is it okay if I stay here or do you want me to move over?
All right, I will just...
Yeah, I'll just stay right here. All right, board, you have in front of you the district appointments, and if you don't mind, I would like to go through these as a Roman numeral rather than going through each letter. We'll just, I think it'll speed the process up. Are there any objections to that?
No.
All right, so district appointments, we're going from letter A, which is the District Treasurer, all the way through to the National Medical Review Officer. Are there any questions there?
No.
May we have a motion, please, to accept those appointments?
So moved. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Let's take a look...oh, we gotta do the oath for the District Treasurer. So Cindy?
The Clerk.
The Clerk, right, because we just appointed you. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
I will.
Congratulations, Cindy.[336.19][336.19](applause)
And you'll be the Treasurer on your own?
Yeah. Okay, we are looking at the district designations for the coming school year, which includes the banks that we'll be using, and the location of the postings for the Board of Education, as well as the Webster Herald being the official newspaper. Why don't we take those three right now? We have a motion to accept those, please.
I'll make that motion.
And the second there, all...any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that part passes. Let's take Section D, the administration of petty cash for each of the buildings, as well as the person authorized to sign the school lunch agreements. Any questions there? May we have a motion to accept the D and E section?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, a second, please. Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move on to Roman numeral six, which is the necessary resolutions. We have a number of them, going from the Superintendent...authorizing the Superintendent to make transfers, all the way through to...I lost it.
Change orders.
Let's stop at the...yeah, the change over there. Motion, please, to accept that? And seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, fees and charges. Presently, athletic events, $2 for adults during the evening, students, no fee for Webster students, and $1 for all other students. Part B, rental of buses, we're saying $2.40 a mile, as well as $24.80 per hour for the driver. Rental of musical instruments, we are looking at a suggested price of a school year rental for $80, and a summer rental of $20. The school lunch, there will be no change, it's $2.55, both for elementary and secondary students. And to use the buildings, we have various fees for AV technician, the custodian, the food service, and sentries. We are suggesting for Fridays, Saturday evenings...evenings and Saturdays, $48.40, all the way down to $32.40, and for the Sunday suggestion, $49.60, all the way down through to $33.20. And we're also, under F, we are looking at the college extension from Monroe Community College. We're gonna go with the agreement as per made with the MCC.
I do have a question.
Maybe you have the same question I do.
Is it about the lunches?
No.
Okay. You're on the lunch.
Okay, I'm on the lunch. We have $2.55 for elementary, $2.55 for secondary. Again, there must be a different portion size? Bigger kids, bigger lunches? Does that work out?
Yeah, it does work out right now. That's something we're looking in the future of segregating out those prices, but we wanted to hold everything flat for one year to see what that did, and see what it did to the bottom line.
Okay, thanks.
My question...
And your question?
It was just, is this a typo under the MCC agreement? It says 2011 to 2014, or is it truly the same? Has that not been looked at for 2015 moving forward? Letter F.
I'd need your...on that, Brian?
For the college extension?
Yep.
If you...it says current and...
She's wondering why it says 14 rather than 15 or 16.
And I just wondered, is that a typo or have we not adjusted?
Yeah, I hit a typo.
Okay, good, all right.
So the agreement's been extended through, well, 16 probably now.
I believe so, yes. I have to double check.
Is that 2016?
I have to double check.
Okay.
I think they're typically three-year intervals, but...
So then we would just...
You might just need to re-up it.
15-16, so we're actually saying 15 through 17.
Right.
Okay.
And should the fee be altered, is really the question, so...but I trust Brian's...
Well, and if it's different than what he just said...
Correct.
He'll bring it back at the next meeting and we'll change it.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
All right. May we have a motion to accept those fees? Thank you, and a second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's move on to Section Eight, which is the salary for our substitute teachers. We're suggesting $97 a day, as well as adult help positions going to $9.50 to $10, and the student help, starting in January of 2016, going to $9. Our community program and services, we have our suggested prices there for 2016. We have our substitute personnel for our various clerical, school nurse, teacher aide May we have a motion to accept those particular salaries?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, a second.
No, no, no.
No questions?
Yes. Hold on one second here, I had to hear. And at $97 a day?
Yes.
What's the hours on that?
Seven hours.
Seven hours? Okay.
Still below the median for the county.
Okay.
Or just at the median.
Just at the median?
Yeah.
Okay, and that put us there. Okay.
That brings us so that we won't have trouble getting subs, correct?
That's the goal.
That's the goal. Okay. Have we had that in the past?
Yes.
Getting subs?
Yes. It's a county-wide problem.
Okay.
And if it continued to still be a problem, you could bring it back to us.
It was mid-year and we could change it.
Correct. Be ready for that.
All right, I'm good.
You're good? Yep. My memory's failing me. Cindy, did we already make a motion for that?
Ann did.
Okay.
Ann got it, and then I seconded it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, our annual election and vote will be held Tuesday, May 17, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Webster School Gymnasium. May we have a motion, please, for that? Move.
Second.
Sue, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. And that ends our reorganizational meeting. All right, we move into a bus bond resolution. Want to give us some information on that?
Sure. This is a standard roll call resolution, because the district is going to be taking out serial bonds for our bus borrowing, very similar to what we do every year at this time. The total is still the same that the voters approved, the 1,510,000. It's just the board giving the approval for us to actually go borrow the money now to get the buses in time for school to start.
Any questions there? Is this a roll call?
Yes.
We need a motion. I'll make the motion.
Second, please. All right. This is a roll call vote.
Sue? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now going to move to an introduction of our new administrators at Plank South Elementary School. Karen, would you like to introduce them?
Thank you, Mike. So if I could have Mr. Scott Wilcox and Ms. Jennifer Sullivan come on up. We are very excited to...and I'm very excited to recommend the appointment of Mr. Scott Wilcox as the new principal at Plank South, and Ms. Jen Sullivan as the interim assistant principal for Plank South. They actually began their official duties within the last week, and tonight, we're hoping that the board will act upon the recommendation and formally appoint them. And if Scott and/or Jen would like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Sure. I just...I wanna say how thrilled I am to be back in Webster, and as I was telling the board earlier, I left a few years ago, and what I really wanted more than anything was to come back in Webster, in particular as an elementary school principal. And I'm just so excited to be back, and it's been wonderful meeting so many of the educators in Plank South already, and we can't wait to get started and meet the kids and get going in the fall. So I'm just really looking forward to it and really thrilled to be here.
I agree, I feel the same way. I feel very honored to have this opportunity. Plank South has been my home for 14 years. I love those kids and families so much and the staff, and this is...it's really a dream come true, so I'm very honored and super excited to work with Scott.
Thanks.
Thanks.[918.86][918.86](laughter)
I know, I'm jumping the gun, I'm jumping...I'm jumping the gun. May we please have a motion to accept the appointments at Plank South? And seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
And he even raises his hand. Motion carries. Now we can say congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Gee, I noticed the Plank North Principal's...
I know. He's so great.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mike. I wanted to begin my report by congratulating all 670 members of Webster's Class 2015. They are now officially high school graduates. I had the honor and absolute pleasure of sharing in my very first commencement Sunday as Superintendent on June 28, just a couple weeks ago, when the Schrader and Thomas High School seniors marched across the RIT stage and into their futures. As you look at the pictures on the screen, you'll see why this day was so memorable. These are the joyous moments in time our students will never forget, and neither will their parents or grandparents. There are plenty of...there were plenty of cheers, and tear-filled hugs, and elated high fives. It was an outstanding day for all of us who had the pleasure to attend. If you want to experience it for yourself, be sure to tune in to WETV Cable Channel 15, where the entire commencement ceremony for both Schrader and Thomas are currently airing through the summer, and I think they air twice a day. Right, Paul? Twice a day for each building. Once again, congratulations to the entire class of 2015. You'll remain in our thoughts as you prepare to begin your exciting lives after high school. As I shared on Twitter, these graduates always will be considered our students. They are our 670 graduates, they are our 670 points of light, our 670 sources of pride, and 670 reasons why we all have the greatest jobs in the world. So, lastly, from our graduates to those just beginning their journey in Webster Schools. If you know of families just beginning with students entering the district, please encourage them to register now for the 15-16 school year. You can see the link in the contact information for central registration here, and it is currently the spotlight story on the district's website, websterschools.org. So if you'd like more information, please visit our site. Please remember that school begins this year on Wednesday, September 2. Can't believe I'm reminding people about the start of school, and it's only July 8. But the reason why we're doing this is it's September 2, and it's the Wednesday before Labor Day. Okay, so we have to remember that this is the first time that Webster has done this, and it's because of a quirk in our schedule in order to get enough...quirk in the calendar, and it's in order to get enough school days in for our kids next year. So Wednesday, September 2. That ends my report.
Thank you, Karen. All right, we'll move into our Treasurers' Report from May. Brian, anything special on that?
We received our last sales tax payment from Monroe County in the month of May, and the only other thing to report with our Treasurers' update is that our rates are holding steady at our banks due to the amount we have on deposit. Other than that, nothing too spectacular for the month of May.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May we have a motion, please, to accept the Treasurers' Report? Thank you, Mike, a second, and the other, Mike. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We now have before us a resolution for cooperative bidding. Brian, anything on that?
This is our yearly Monroe Two Cooperative Purchasing that we do for many, many items. Practically everything that we purchase usually comes off a BOSI's bid these days. So this is the standard resolution for us to get into that shared service with the other districts through Monroe Two.
Questions from the board? May we have a motion, please, to accept their resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ann, and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, board, we have a change order. It's dealing with the lights, skylights at Schrader. Brian, you wanna add anything to that?
Thank you for previously approving the change order limit to $25,000 from the previous $10,000 earlier on. The reason why that is, is because of the low bidding that we got on the roof project, there are opportunities for us to get some economies of scale in this project, and a lot of them seem to be coming around, if we wanted to get it done, around that figure. So rather than hold up the process due to the limited amount of board meetings over the summer and wait for the board to approve change orders, we kinda have to strike quickly while the...while we have the staff there from the companies to get things done in a very efficient manner. This is one of those items. All of our skylights are original at Schrader. It was not in the original scope because they were holding up. But due to the recent rains we've had, and with some of the other roofing work going on, they noticed that there was some significant underlying issues, and while they were there, they could do it at a very, very reasonable cost for us, so the change order is before you for that reason. They might as well do them while they're up there, since they are original, and it's the actual great benefit to us to have that done right now.
Questions from the board? Good comment, I agree. May we have a motion, please, then, to accept the...or execute the change order?
So moved.
Thank you, Sue and Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you. All right, we need to have a little talk right now about our board liaison assignments. Last year, we really didn't have a specific school assigned. We tried to develop a calendar to make sure that a board member could go to each event that the buildings had. We may wanna decide to go back the old way, where each board member was assigned a building. And I just think that's worth a discussion at this point, what we think would work and what...how we feel about that. So I'll entertain any thoughts on that.
I think we kinda tended to stick with the school we were closely assigned to anyway, so...
Well, last year, we really didn't have any schools assigned.
No, we didn't. But I mean from the prior...but I think it worked that if somebody couldn't go, somebody was happily filled in, so...
I like to have specific schools. It just...it helps you build a relationship with people. Otherwise, you're just kinda all over the place, and it's hard to connect with anybody. So this way, you know, there's a board member for everyone to approach if they need to.
All right, so are you suggesting, then, that each board member has an elementary building?
That's what I'm suggesting.
I think that...yes, I agree with that.
I didn't make that clear.
Well, I just wanna make sure. All right, if that is the case, let's start with DeWitt. Is there...Mike, do you wanna take DeWitt?
Well, there's seven schools.
There's seven board members.
There's seven board members. And even though I like going to it, I'd like to go back to Plank North, if David will have me. If David will have you.
I'm sorry, say again.
I'm sorry?
Just kinda like what the schedules were of these meetings, like what particular day?
Well, each school, I can tell you, Plank North, PTSA usually was a Wednesday night. If I remember, Clem North was both night and day.
But it is...it is only going to be night next year.
Okay, so they're all different.
It does vary.
So if you find you get one that is not conducive to your schedule, maybe you could find somebody to switch. I'd be...you know, I'm fine with it. Schlegel is very nice, they have a meeting every other month, and they're always at night. So there's four to five meetings. I'd like to do that school again, if you could put me on there, but if somebody then needs to switch, I'm happy to switch as well.
Do you have a preference, Mike?
Are they all at night, or some are...
That we...we don't know.
The calendar's not out yet.
Yeah.
They typically alternate daytime and nighttime.
Are you taking Clem North?
I am very willing to give that up, because they're all at night, if that's the best for you.
I was gonna take Plank South if you were tied to Clem North, or...
Okay.
Because you're down for both, so what?
Right. You know, we don't have all seven board members here, and I'm wondering, is it possible that we could maybe do the school liaisons later, just to give everybody a chance to weigh in? Because we are missing a couple of members.
Do you wanna do it next week?
We know Tom would like to do State. Sue wants to do Schlegel. This might be easy to figure out.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's what I'm guessing.
I don't care, that's fine.
But I can do Clem North. I'm just, you know...
Clem South or North?
I can do Clem South, because I have more flexibility, and I know for sure that Clem North is going to be every...it's gonna be evenings. So I'm very happy to take Clem South, if you would like, if it makes it easier.
I was finding a day one, a day one works easier.
Oh, a day works...oh, okay.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it.
I think you're gonna find...they're gonna alternate anyway, so then I'll stay with Clem North, because I know it's all at night.
All right, so...
So Mike, what were you taking? Mike Guston?
Mike Guston is taking Plank North.
Okay, so one of the other two, whichever.
Sue's got Schlegel, Tom's got State. Ann, are you gonna be with Clem?
I will stay with Clem.
Clem North.
Clem North, I'm sorry.
All right. That puts me at DeWitt, or Clem South. You know, I'm going to...I think I'll take Ann's suggestion, we'll stay with these four right now, and we'll see how the other board members want, and I'll fill in wherever I'm needed.
You're Plank...Plank South?
He's not sure.
He's not sure.
Yeah, I'll take the opposite of whatever...
Okay, so we will fill this out. What do you...because the two high schools basically only have two meetings a year, what do you think about the two officers handling that?
I like that.
Are you okay with that, Sue?
Sure.
All right. All right, let's turn to Monroe County School Boards Association. Now, these meetings are usually on a Wednesday, 12 o'clock, run to about 1:30.
Wednesday, 12 o'clock?
Yep. They usually are once a month...actually, they're usually about five a year. Usually they'll start...did this start in September?
Yes.
All right, so...
I think legislative might start August. I don't remember. Or steering starts in August, that's right, not legislative.
Now, I forgot, we're allowed one voting member, but two can go?
You can have as many as you want go.
But there's only one voting member, all right. So this is actually for the voting member, okay? So legislative. Any takers, Ann?
I would like to take legislative.
I think Tom would also like to be on that. So we'll add both Ann and Tom. Labor relations. Ah, can you make those Wednesdays?
Well, I'm assuming I have to take one of them, right, if they're all on a Wednesday?
Well, you don't have to, but if you'd like to. That's a very interesting, eye-opening meeting.
Sounds like it. Yeah, that's fine.
So we got Mike TV?
Are you a chair next year?
They have not called me.
Okay, then you're not. That should be done by now. They don't usually ask the same people.
Good. You know what, why don't I also...I'll be your alternate there, Mike, on the labor. Ann, it seems you want to do information?
I mean, that's an interest. I don't want to be the voting member for everything if people want to do it, but I would like to attend.
You think you can go?
Yeah, Wednesdays are great for me.
All right, because it is...you'll learn a lot of topics.
Yeah, I'll go.
So Mike Guston will be the voting member. But I would like to attend.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So I could be your alternate.
All right, cool. Okay, Carm and I will be on the executive committee. We'll have no member on steering committee. Mike, are you gonna be on audit? For district committee?
Oh, for...oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So myself and Mike will do audit. Besides Mike, is anyone that wants to do budget advisory?
I could pull...
You know, we can...we won't finalize, all right?
We could rotate that.
Because we still have...
Yeah, we can chair, yeah.
That's not bad because it's...
When is that?
It's a Monday.
It's five.
Five Mondays.
Four?
Yeah, that's not bad.
One hour before... Last year was one hour before.
A meeting, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't bad.
Okay, our policy, Sue, you're still gonna chair, correct?
I'm happy to do that.
And other members?
I'll stay on.
I was on it last...was it policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just want to make sure there's only three members though.
Okay, I can do that, I like that. That was fun.
It's a good...
Really was fun.
It is.
All right, very.
It's good stuff.
The heated exchanges, I don't know. Got a little crazy on me, Sue.
Okay, the Wen Assets meeting is usually on a Thursday, 12 o'clock, at the Aquatic Center.
I think Ann was interested.
Yeah, I'm...Sue, you've got so many responsibilities, I'm happy to take that.
Well, I'd like to stay on, but I think Mike wants to go. So why don't you and I do it?
Okay, we can...
It's good to have two people, we can...
Yeah, because there's sometimes you just can't make it.
Yeah, yeah. We can either alternate or we can both go. And it's not bad.
Right.
It's actually good. I don't want to insult anybody.
And Sue and Ann, you're still strategic?
Yep.
And is there another board member that would like to be on that?
If not budget, then I would do strategic.
What's good about strategic planning is Ann and I are both on the core team and then the committee work, you know, it's really, you come when you can. Because we try to structure the meetings so that everybody has meaningful input whenever they happen to come. You know, we do group activities and it's...you know, people can pick up where we left off pretty easily.
Cindy, will you make a note to add this to our old business? Because what we have right now is not finalized, but at least when we have a full board here, we can go through it again. Thank you very much. All right, it's time to take a look at the consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look at that. It consists of the minutes, personnel actions, the recommendations on the Committee on Special Education, as well as the recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Education, as well as the salary recommendations for the confidential staff. There's the CSE appointments, the district organizational chart. There is some tennis court cleaning, as well as a bid for a wallboard. May we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second, Sue. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would like to point out to the board that we do have a goal-setting workshop next week, Thursday, July 16. It starts at 8:00 in the morning, it is at Willink. And with that being said...
That's right, I would show up at their own place.
I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'm sorry, could you just give me the time again for that?
8:00 at Willink Greenhouse Conference Room.
Is that green conference room, is that a warm pool? Is that a warm room?
It's the middle. It's the middle section of Willink.
Well, sometimes there are very warm and summer pools.
Yeah, that's why they announced it was changed.
Yeah.
Right.
I would've gone there, though.
You get in some of those meetings and then you're either frozen or boiling.
All right. A motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.